All right, we're going to get started. Appreciate everybody coming tonight. It is the Darlington City Council for Tuesday, March the first, two thousand twenty-two, and starting six thirty. Mrs. Reed, if you would say the prayer portion up?
With all hearts and minds clear, please let us pray. Father God, we come to you tonight thanking you for this opportunity to come before you. I pray that you would fill our hearts, our minds, and our souls with a spirit of unity that would transform all of our efforts into a great and prosperous Darlington. I pray that you would guide our deliberations to be in your will and so that I, we can multiply our gains as only you can see fit. Oh Father, I pray that among all this turmoil throughout the world, that you grant us peace and harmony and comfort to the many families that have lost loved ones. We thank you, oh Father, for all of the blessings you have bestowed on our great city of Darlington. We ask you to bless this meeting tonight, all those present and all those whom our decisions will affect. We ask all of these in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Do you have approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting from February the eighth, two thousand twenty-two?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of our regular city council meeting of February eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
Mr. Dells? Mr. Millie? Second? Mr. Sayers? Questions carried? Thank you. Do you have approval of the meeting for, uh, the agenda for tonight?
I'd like to make one amendment. I'd like to remove nine B for next month. Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to remove nine B until next month and motion to approve. I'll second.
Mr. Millie? Ms. Backus? Mrs. Reed? Mr. Sayers? Very good. Questions carried. Thank you. Um, now, the agenda has been approved. All right, for the report of standing committees, the Darlington Downtown Revitalization Association, Mrs. Payne?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First, I would like to report to you and thank you and express my gratitude for you guys agreeing again to fund the Saturdays on the Square Concert Series. And we worked really hard this month to get all of the bands slated from May through September, and that is in your packet. And there are some flyers here if anybody is interested in the audience. May fourteenth will be Muddy Creek Revival, which is a southern rock and country band. June eleventh will be Mike Taylor and the Holiday Band, which are members of the Beach Music Hall of Fame. July ninth will be the Saxi Keys Band, which is a jazz band. August thirteenth will be the Rick Strickland Band, also a member of the Beach Music Hall of Fame. And September tenth will be John King, who is a country singer and songwriter, famous for writing songs for Hootie and the Blowfish, the song "Rollin", a number one hit song, if you're familiar with that. So we will have a very, a very good lineup of musicians this year. Also, it's getting to be spring. The weather's getting nice, and that means that event season is starting this month, March twenty-sixth, the last Saturday this month. Joe's Grill and the DDR A will be doing a chili championship cook-off. There'll be a car show and chili cook-off. There's a flyer in your packets if you're interested or know somebody who would like to cook. You actually would win a championship belt, like the Philly style belt, if you are the winner. And it is people's choice, five-dollar take senior's van, and the proceeds will go to our. Our annual Taste of Darlington will be here before you know it, another week after that, on Thursday, April seventh, at Darlington Raceway. We're still accepting cooks and table hosts for spots. And new this year, each participating business or table will receive a pair of tickets to the May race for participation. Also, our annual golf tournament will be held Wednesday, April thirteenth, at Darlington Country Club. Teams and sponsor slots are still available. Come enjoy an afternoon of golf, a delicious buffet lunch, and fellowship with area business leaders. If you can't make it to any of those, the DRA continues to have its monthly member breakfast at eight o'clock on Thursday, March twenty-fourth, the last Thursday of the month, at Tocky's Diner in the back room. The meals are at no charge for members and a small five-dollar fee to go towards the meal for any other that you'd like to attend. The events allow our businesses to build connections and strengthen our local economy, because if we don't support each other, then nobody else will. The board, the DRA Board has also approved five thousand dollars for facade grants for two thousand and twenty-two. We will be making one of those grants here shortly, sometime probably later this week. In the meantime, continue to promote Darlington's businesses on social media and through our news alert system each week. Our alerts reach more than twenty-seven hundred people, and we continue to update our webpage, buildupdarlington.org. You can submit information, and you can sign up to receive the alerts on your phone by a text message or through. Any questions?
Ready to go, Darlington Chamber?
Hello, it's the first in your packet. First in your packet, we have a flyer for our annual, we have a flyer for our annual membership meeting on March twenty-fourth. It is at the Grandville Post Office. It is from six to eight. Saturday night we catering for tickets. You may go online or our website. The link is on the flyer, or you may call me.
Do you mind setting that link so that anyone can listen in here?
Yeah, it is, it's members.darlingtonchamber.com backslash events.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are here tonight to ask for funding for our Freedom Fest two thousand twenty-two. Over the past year, our Chamber Board members have worked tirelessly tearing the chamber down to the foundation and rebuilding a better organization. Our treasurer, Amanda, spent five months going over every part of our financial situation. She cut out any non-essential services. She negotiated contracts with local businesses for essential services and was not, and was able to bring your chamber to a place of financial stability. With this being said, our executive board voted to change Freedom Fest from a fundraiser to a gift to our town. I had worked Freedom Fest for the past four years and decided on year one that we needed to do better for the children of our town. You will never know the heartache it brought to have the children offer up a handful of change to purchase one ride ticket. This is not what Freedom Fest should be about. And this is what we are setting out to change. We want to offer the rides free of charge for the children of our community. Tonight, we are asking for eleven thousand dollars to cover the cost of the fireworks, which you showed, which you so generously gave us last year. But we would also like to ask for thirty-five hundred dollars more to help offset the cost of the carnival rides. We are actively seeking other funding for the rides, which your gift would reduce our goal to ten thousand dollars. Thank you for your consideration tonight, and a decision soon would help us to finalize our budget goals. You have a copy of the fireworks contract and of the carnival rides and the carnival ride costs in the packet that Brooke gave you. Are there any questions?
Okay, I want to be clear. So what, what, what are you, the total? Is it the thirty-five hundred or fifteen?
We would like the eleven thousand to pay for the fireworks. But if you would bump it up to fifteen, we could put thirty-five hundred dollars towards the carnival rides so that, that no one pays for carnival rides this year. They'll be free.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good to me, though. It costs me a lot to, to pay for the rides. I have more than one grand.
Yes, Amanda, it does cost a lot.
So my question would be, and I guess it would be for Gloria or maybe you would know. The money that we donated to the chamber last year, did we get any kind of receipts back or any kind of accountability for this money?
We paid first and turned in our receipts, and then y'all paid us back after our receipts were turned in to you. Mr. Gordon, give.
So we did, they did spend eleven thousand dollars justifiably on fireworks.
Yeah, I think whatever Howard requested, they turned it in to him.
Okay.
No, we paid first, and then y'all paid us back. That's how it went.
Is there anybody this time?
Yes, we've already paid. Actually, the first deposit invoice is in your packet that we've already paid the fifty-five hundred dollars to secure the date. So we've already paid half of the fireworks.
So what would be half the secret? Do we need to?
I'd like, I'd like to motion to approve fifteen thousand dollars for.
Eleven thousand plus thirty-five hundred? That's fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen five, it's not fifteen.
I'm sorry, fourteen five. I'm sorry. Nervous when you ask for a quarter.
I'd like to motion approve fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for the Darlington Chamber Commerce for this event for this summer.
I'll second.
Mr. Gordon, Millie? Mrs. Backus? Mr. Sayers? I and Mr., Mr. Dells asked the question.
Thank you. Have a great event. Thank you. And it's June twenty-fifth, June twenty-fifth.
Just as a follow-up on this, I know that we, and this isn't for y'all, we, we get our funding requests along and along and along, and more than once, we made a suggestion that we have a designated time in January where people come before. So I would ask that between now and January, our city administrators would work on getting a certain, because we've got it on one time.
Should we do it between now and budget season? Should we do it between now and budget time?
Well, we can probably, as we're doing our budget, we can make a decision as to how much we think we're going to just allocate for that and then let everybody know they got to come on a certain timeframe to do it. Again.
So then what you're saying is, so what happens if other nonprofit's coming and they want to get donations for the city? We can't say we just going to give to the same people all the time and not look at other donations, other nonprofits?
I think that we would do it like county business, and they would make applications. Applications would be reviewed, and the awards would be given rather than coming up on the night of a presentation and the asking for an award at that time. My understanding is, and I could be wrong, but my understanding is, is these things are submitted to council, they are reviewed, they're discussed by council, and awards are made. But that's the kind of thing that I'd like to see us doing. So that, that we know what kind of money we have set aside, the community knows what kind of money we have set aside, and they know when to come to ask for it. You know, we may have some bumps in the road when we first put it together, but I just think it'd be good to start working on it.
As long as it's set up where everybody have opportunities to put in their request, then all requests are reviewed fairly and not say, we're going to give this specific group a certain amount just because we've done it in past years.
Every year is a new year.
Very good. Thank you. All right, since it's a situation to speak, um, let's see. Nova Hopless? No, Nova Hopless? No. Mrs. Hopless?
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Nova Hopless, H-E-R-K-L-E-S-S, and I'm coming to talk, speak on the property at three oh eight Washington Street. That's where my mom live at and we live at. That's our family home. For six years, when my dad was growed back dead in the coffin, in the hurt, a hole, somebody fell in a hole. This is six years now. The city haven't done anything for it. When I go and talk to somebody, they always pushing me back about, we gonna see about it. I'm gonna talk to you later. I had, he had a cold phone call from, um, you Mr. Payne, you hadn't returned my call, and I gave you my number. Nobody had returned my call about that property. Now, we need to have that property covered either with cement. I understand that there's a pipe running across the street that are all them, but that's not a problem. That's the city problem. They need to do something about that. That hole been there for six years. You pass by there on that street, you look at my mama yard, and you see the fade out posters there. They were orange when you put them there, they white now. And they don't make no sense. None whatsoever. I can't get no kind of response. I can't get no help. Only thing is, you pushing us to the side, and we'll see about it. Now, nobody has seen about it yet. But the only thing I want to do is go to my mama house and walk through the yard and stand right there and see when you come back up. That I want you to do, because it decaying again. And it don't make no sense. So what you can do is set a meeting with me, and I'll be there. But I want you to stand right there and see when you come back up. Now, I got grandchildren. Nobody can park over there. It don't make no sense. And it look terrible over there. And my mom house shouldn't even be looking like that for six years. Six years, I ride up there and I think about my poor day. And that one they buried now. And that one, that hole they take. And I shouldn't have to ride up there every day and see it like that. It don't make no sense. We was asking for it to be covered. And somebody said, well, if you can't cover with dirt, I know you can't cover with dirt. Cover with dirt if you want to, and stand on top of it and see where you go. It needs cement, it need mortar mix. You need to check into it before somebody get hurt again. Somebody got hurt there. And the whole, when it rain, rained for six years, it gonna merge, keep on merging into my mom yard. And somebody need to check on it. Uh, somebody said they don't know about what the DOT can do, so I tell how DOT can do about it. If you don't know about it, then you shouldn't have the job. You know, it does just point blank, you know. If you can't talk to them, but I can talk to them for you. But my mama yard need to be fixed.
Okay, I'll come and see you tomorrow.
All right, I appreciate that.
Come and see you tomorrow.
Well, Council, I asked Ms. Hopless to come so she can say, voice her opinion. But we have been dealing with it for quite a time. But this is the same residents that I, I voiced at our last, um, our last, it might not have been at our last, uh, council meeting, but whenever, we may have even been in executive session where I was telling you that when the project, the, um, the Stormwater Project that we had on the, in, in Ward Two, at that time, the engineers tried their, their darndest to identify how they could, could fix it. And they identified that they had three different systems running up under there. And they were only concerned at that point, of course, was finishing the storm water. We've had others to go out. But that's why I was kind of anxiously or just pushing that we, out of the, whatever, this infrastructure we have now, I know it's not for individual homes and things, but this is a system that, that the engineers are saying is running over there, that we could possibly go ahead and get her fixed now. Because, as she says, it, it, I mean, it's been that long. And we have, I've been with her with, and talking with the, with the different administrators to see what can we do. And the only thing that they, under the prior administration, was able to put that iron, the, that metal plate over, and that doesn't, doesn't last. I mean, it is really dangerous, and folk have fell in the hole. Okay, so it, we have to really do something. So I was thinking with, with all of this new things that, for infrastructure, that we could put that as a priority. Ms. Hopless is a long-time taxpaying resident there in Ward Two, been there for a long time, always very active in, in our political processes. So I do want, and I ask her to please come, because I wanted you all to hear it from her. And I appreciate it if we could figure out a way to go ahead and get this done.
Thank you, Ms. Hopless.
Thank you.
All right, um, Mel Brooks? Uh, Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Couple things I wanted to bring up tonight. In our last meeting, you and I had a discussion after the meeting. And at that time, you were quoting from a book stating what the regulations are for, for city council meetings. And I apologize, you were right. In there, it says that, doesn't say you, that we have to have the right to speak. That's up to you, the council members. The time limits, up to you and the members. And what they recommend in there is five to ten minutes. Some places do less. So there are things. And it does say, city council approves the minutes of meetings, which we don't get to see. So, you know, you're right. I apologize. I don't agree with it. So that's just my first one. More importantly to me, couple things with water and sewer. At the last meeting, Mr. Mayor, you talked about how the city had been running in the hole year after year, and that you decided to raise the water rates. I saw the newspaper on, and in there, it was mentioned, and you kind of said that you kind of laughed it off and that you kind of put pressure on the city council to approve that. Now, did anybody ever stop to think that last year, this town, this city, this county, the state, everyone was going through COVID? People had lost jobs. They were hurting. Inflation was going up. And we have a lot of people in this, this town, they can't, couldn't afford all that. So on top of it, we raised their sewer rates. And then when they couldn't pay the rates, we cut the water off. And then we want to get all this back pay or a penalty for not being able to pay it. You even mentioned that you paid for somebody's. You went and raised the rates. I don't know that anybody in here was privy to what you were going to be doing. Those rates, if we were going to have to raise them, didn't have to be raised that high. The city could have been aware of what was going to happen. Late fees. We could have foregone the late fees for a period of time simply because we know this town is hurting. There's people out there hurting. So we didn't have to do all that. I think it really needs to be looked at. Now, my final thing is, still on water and sewer, that's meeting. We had a couple people come up here, and they talked about areas where sewage was coming up along the roads and pipes and everything. And it's been an ongoing problem for years. What happens when a child gets out there and plays, and maybe they're going through this sewage, they come out down with Ebola or cholera, and somebody dies. Comes back on this council and the councils before it because nothing's been done. They brought it up, but I didn't hear nothing. One person on this council speak up and say, let's do this. Let's look at this and how we're going to address this. I have worked in fifteen countries in Africa, and I've seen cholera.
Hello.
I've had cholera. God forbid it ever happens here to our children. We don't need, we need to do something about this. It's an environmental problem. Maybe the EPA needs to be involved in it. Whatever. This city council needs to do something to address those problems. And then we need to get something done about it. I do appreciate the fact that you took off, that we couldn't ask questions of the council. So I appreciate that, but you and I had it in our discussion last week. After the meeting, we talked. We had several people that you said will talk after the meeting. Mr. Mayor, if there's anything that needs to be said after the meeting, needs to be said at this meeting where everybody at this council and sitting out here can hear. Because we don't have any idea what you talked about or decided.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
I want to say this to you, Mr. Lewis.
Pardon me?
I did. Twice I've already addressed those fees. And I think the council do need to revisit those fees that we charge citizens on that water bill. I brought that up twice already.
Absolutely.
But this council seemed to not want to even address the fees, because even the structure of the fees need to be addressed. Because it's definitely hurting the citizens of Dallas.
Well, what bothers me is you do it, and nobody is aware you're doing it. And we have a lot of elderly people in this area that don't have income, that some of us may have. We need to think about them.
And let me say this. And on top of that, there's another ordinance that was put in place as far as people with abandon, with houses that they're not living in. So that ordinance on top of the water bill is going to affect citizens. And it's, it's too expensive because it starts out at four hundred a year, then a thousand dollars a year, then three thousand dollars a year. Citizens can't afford that.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Citizens cannot afford that. So it need to be addressed.
I agree.
The count, the ordinance also need to be addressed.
Jake DeBose?
Just one last thing, Mr. Mayor. This is a prime example of what I was talking about. I bring up about the sewage and everything else. What are we going to do? Nothing. We're going to sit up there just like the half of the last twenty years?
Let's go ahead and discuss it tonight, okay? My turn to talk, okay? Mr. Lewis, you want us to fix everything so that there's no sewer around the street. But then you want us to say that we shouldn't raise the water bill. You said that we shouldn't. And let me talk. You said that we shouldn't, that we didn't tell the people. We gave everybody a reading, a notice, and a halftime. The water bill didn't get raised until August. If you listen to the numbers that I quoted the other day, less people got their water turned off than the year before, okay? There's always been late fees, okay? And if you're going to get things fixed, we finally got it from, why is it not been fixed? Because I told you, for the last eight years, it's been in the hole. So we finally got it to where it's not in the hole, so we can start trying to get things fixed. So you can't have both ways, okay? And that's why I raised my hand. If you don't want to vote me in, don't vote me in. But please, quit coming to my council and whining about stuff when we're trying to get things done, okay? We're getting things done, all right? And we're letting people know what's happening. I'm as clear and transparent as everybody can possibly be. We let everybody know the water bill was raised, okay? The water bill got raised. We got out of the hole. We're getting things fixed, okay? We've been in the hole for years. Stuff has to be fixed. It's a business. Has to be fixed, okay? So please quit coming up. We'll take your comments. We're not here for a discussion. That was the purpose of that, so we don't be here all night for discussion. I do not have anything to hide, Mr. Lewis. I stood there in front of everybody the other night and talked to you, so please do not insinuate that I have anything to hide. I tell everybody when everything is being done. So I raised the water bills. I did not force anybody to raise the water bill. Everybody voted for it, the ones that wanted to vote for it. That's the way things work. Mr. Boyd does not make things happen. Mr. Boyd works to try to get things changed. That's what the rest of the council is here for. So please, quit coming up to our council. This is my room. This is my council. This is the only thing that I have control of. So please, I allow you to speak as I ask you to speak. You're allowed to speak. Please do not come up with bad words, okay, about that. Anytime that you like to talk afterwards or have a complete discussion, we'll complete discussion. But please, excuse me, Mrs. But please, excuse me, Mrs. DeBose?
No, you're not going to sit there and excuse me.
I ask you to leave. If you continue on, Mrs. DeBose, please come up.
Wait a minute, let me say something.
No, discussion's over.
First of all, well, oh, oh.
Discussion's over, Mrs.
Excuse me.
Discussion is over.
You don't own me. You might own the rest of these people. But you do not own me on this council.
Mr. DeBose?
Let me educate you right now. My council, my city, my ears. That's your racist problem right there, my ears. You don't own nobody around here. You say no dictatorship. You lost your mind in here.
Mr. DeBose, I can't hear what you're saying.
Okay. Good evening.
Excuse me, Mr. DeBose, I'm very sorry.
Okay, good evening.
How you doing?
I just speak peace, I would say, subscribe.
I appreciate that.
I speak peace and unity amongst council.
Impossible peace. That's what Paul says.
Yes.
Impossible.
Impossible.
All right, there's more, please, control.
All right. My name is Jaclyn DeBose. I'm a bus driver for Darlington, D-15, Ms. Jaclyn. That's my president, Sean Odom. In March 2018, I had started a nonprofit organization called Jumping to New Heights. It's geared towards the youth and young adults. It's a two-fold program, which consists of double-dutch, which we started, dance, jazz, tap, ballet, boxing, fencing. And it's an educational program where children can learn law, business structure, not college prep, but changing their mindset of going to college, because it's a whole new world out there. We also have law school for lawyers coming in, because I believe, I believe that children and younger adults should know business and law, because we have to deal with that for the remainder of our lives. I right now have rented the building at 116 Main Street. I started, when I started, in March 2018, I had, I had 300 kids sign up. I was asking the school to help me in order to practice there, but of course, no avail. We continue to practice. I still have the 300 students. But I'm coming forth to find out if I can receive any funds in order to expedite this program to the level we need to. There's some kids, we don't want the kids to be called by the wayside. We want them to have different ideas. And under this program, they get to taste everything without being such a taxing to the parents. They can taste, get to see whether they want to do karate, double-dutch, boxing, and tap into law, architect. It's a lot of vast things under one umbrella. And my logo is the purple umbrella, so you get, you know, a taste to see. But my goal is, I do have my 501(c)(3). I have my board, and like I said, Sean is the president, and then I have two other people that's working with me. I'm incorporating some volunteers. And how to expedite this program is that I'm not mentors in, in order to execute the different sections, like karate, boxing, I'm involving them in. So I'm involving the community as well, to help bring a better mindset to Dallas County. So I was asking for funds in order to expedite the grant open, hopefully in April, and to also to bring in the mentors, because it's going to cost, so.
On Main Street and Old Main or South Main?
South Main. It's beside Jamaican store, that beige building.
Where's that right now?
The Jamaican store.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a beige building. It's Mr. Terry owned the building.
Who used to be the restaurant there?
I think so.
No, where the nightclub used to be or something?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Mr. Jackson's place.
Terry Jackson?
Yes. Okay, Barry, okay. You knew him, he did call me about you.
Yeah, we started talking in Little Denver. And he actually held the building because he saw what I was doing, and he went back home to Atlanta. He said, "She got a good idea, you know, for the youth and younger adults." And he owned that building all the way up to last week when I rented the building. So I mean, for him to believe in me and this program is really astonishing, because he could have advertised the building a long time ago. So I just want to have a big grant opener and start out on a really good foot to bring in these mentors and to have the children to do something different.
And you have how many shows, 300?
Yeah. Yeah, I started, and they signed up 300 kids. And I went out to Society Hill to see where I could utilize their GM, so that's really, I guess they wait and see how COVID going to be. But my goal, overall vision, is to have this program to go to all 46 counties. Because I know and truly believe that it's really a good program, so it won't be so taxing on the parent that, okay, a child go, and I'm going to sign you up for boxing, or, and then they don't like it, you know, they waste the money. So therefore, they get to taste all these different things. Well, the children minds, you know, just change. I don't like this one thing, and then I like this. But it's, they can try everything under one umbrella.
So is the funding that you're asking from us?
Mm-hmm.
For the people who live in Darlington?
Yeah, that's just, I was just giving you an overall view for long term, but just for Darlington.
Sure. Do you have an amount that you're looking?
Well, I was thinking about 13,000 to start, you know. I know what you were saying, Mr. Million, that there should be an application and process, you know, and when you were saying that, I kind of chuckled. But this is a new nonprofit organization, and I just really believe that this will be beneficial to the children of Dallas.
So the children have to pay when they come out?
They would have to start out with a registration. And I was looking like a registration, maybe, because most of the kids and parents, from what I understand, it's not a high rate of income. So I was thinking maybe $30, $35 for a registration. Now, yes, they're going to have to contribute per month, maybe $40 a month, or maybe three children per household, $45 a month, because they have to pull into something. They can't, you know, we're teaching, you know, stewardship as well, you know. We also is working with Beautification of Darlington and the Garden Club, because I believe that they should be able to contribute to picking up trash, you know, beautifying Darlington. So they have to do some volunteer work, whether it's inside or outside. We did do some volunteer work before, but I think it's still in there, and they'll be more grateful for what the things they do have.
Okay, a couple more questions for me, I'm sorry.
Sure.
So do you have something, like, kind of broken out where you?
I can't bring it, I can't submit it. I didn't know how y'all get it, or send it to email, each email?
Well, let's just talk through the questions portion and we can figure it out. So, as we were talking before, you heard us ask about, Ms. Backus asked about, you know, would we submit the monies and the receipts and everything, so we won't be able to do the same thing? So I was just thinking of something that you could show us that would say, here's kind of what I'm going to spend it on?
Yes.
I don't have, like, I'm all about helping the kids, that's not a problem. I just want to see something.
Yeah.
But what's your timeframe? I mean, are you?
Well, I was thinking, maybe opening up in April. I had sent a letter to, emailed the governor, because I wanted his president to come, you know, to see what different, you know, towns are doing, you know, and helping to capture the youth, because, you know, there's so much balance with the youth. And I'm trying to give him a outlet, you know. But I know what you're talking about, basically having a more heart, coffee of everything worked out.
Just something that?
Yes, I would say. I totally accept.
But I just want to make sure we don't hash your timeframe or something.
Okay, yeah. But I was thinking. Yeah, I was thinking about, I'll wait for the governor to respond, like, to see what month and what time will he be able to attend.
So, Ms. Lewis, so is this, have you done this anyplace else?
No, I started driving buses, really, I'm a Class A driver, and I came to get my endorsement. I was going to leave. Basically, I sat around and I noticed that Darlington don't have really a good youth program, so, and this inspired me. I started following up the kids and inspired me to start this program.
So do you already, it's kind of on what Howard is asking. Do you have the proposal, the project outline in a booklet, something that you could come to us with?
Yes, I just didn't know how, I didn't know how y'all handled that as far as, do I know everybody, or?
Mr. Payne.
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest that I meet with Mr. DeBose tomorrow, and we can sit down and discuss this, and I can report back to council.
Will that be fine? Okay.
So I suggest that you come back at next council meeting and ask again.
Yes, ma'am.
After you have a chance to look at whatever?
That's right.
You're going to present. Come back and ask again.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Payne tomorrow. Thank you. Okay, public hearing for Richmond and Spring Streets annexation ordinance.
I did not receive any public comment regarding the annexation of the property at Richmond and Spring Street.
All right, all business, the second reading of Richmond and Spring Streets annexation
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2022-02, which is the annexation of property of Richmond and Spring Streets into the city of Darlington.
I'll second that.
Mr. Nelson?
Hi.
Ms. Backus? Mrs. Reed? Mr. Siggers? There you go, questions carried. All right, new business, PDRTA lease agreement. Mr. Johnson, Mr. DeBose?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, county, allowing me to come this evening. If it's okay, I'd like to do like a two-prong approach, if someone gives a transit update really quick, based on how we are, how we're doing. The Darlington Transit and the commuter bus that leaves Darlington to go to Fort Florence every day, we're actually averaging over 1,000 trips a month right now. And it's continuing to grow, so it's doing very well. And so we're excited about that. We've seen some positive things. More seniors are using the bus. We actually have more veterans now using the bus in Darlington, which I thought was a good thing. And as you may know, the service is in Darlington now, they're free, so there's no cost to those individuals that's using the service. Of course, PD Healthcare Genesis is getting a lot of those trips every month, so we thank them for their support, what they do in the city as well. But a couple, just a couple more things. On March 15th, we have a public hearing in Society Hill. And what that is, is going to be a connection between Society Hill, Douglasville, Darlington, and Harshall. And we've been getting a lot of, a lot of calls from different individuals that really need to get to a grocery store, need to get to a doctor, need to get to different places. So we are, the plan right now is to start that service in mid-April. And really, we, I've been down this road, heading that direction, but the chip shortage in our buses really kind of slowed that process down right now. It's anywhere from a year to 18 months to get buses in, but we did get too recently to be able to provide that service. The lease agreement, I'm not sure how much we share with that, but we have had a major issue with catalytic converters being cut off of our buses, and for us, each time, it's about $1,400 to get, to get one of those replaced on our buses. We, the city allowed us to go over, and we're parking over on Broad Street, West Broad Street, at the city sewer department right now. And as you know, the, we need some work there. I mean, the fence is in pretty rough shape, and the gates are kind of tough to open. So the proposal that I'd like to bring up for council for consideration is basically a lease agreement. And in order for us to be able to apply federal funds to a project, we get 80% federal funds for that type of project. We have to have local support, which is about 20% on the project itself, but we have to have a lease agreement in place to be able to use those federal funds. One example is the Change of Center in Florence. City of Florence had a 20-year lease. You know, I think it's a dollar a year, is what we're paying, or either, a dollar for the entire lease. But we're able to do that, and we're able to bring federal funds to the table. We can do new fence, automated gates, to where the city employees can come up and hit a button, and the gates will roll up and then close back behind them. Driver, female driver recently had a situation, it was after dark, and she was backing in, got out of the vehicle, went to go put herself in her car, and came back out, and as she turned around, there was a man there.
Yeah.
In the dark, and scared the life out of her. So we want to try to avoid that. So she didn't know what he was there for, but luckily, he walked away, and nothing, nothing came from that, but, you know, it just showed us that it can in that kind of situation. So we would love to pursue that. We definitely can apply for the federal funds. We have two grants right now that's pending, where we can basically achieve 80%. We would need to try to come up with 20%. The project itself, with the fence, potentially paving, repaving the surface there, whether it's concrete or asphalt, a lot of it's broken up concrete now. And then putting in a fence, a potentially section off, a portion of the fence to where three to four buses and our drivers' vehicles can be stored within that property. And the benefit on the city's standpoint would be, a new fence, it's cosmetically, it will look a lot better. We can add additional lighting. We can also add surveillance cameras there. So if there is, you know, if there are other vehicles there between the city and PDRTA, we have access to vehicles to see kind of what's going on there. So that's my proposal. The service is going well, but before to what we're doing in the future, I know the city will be going into the budget season pretty soon, and I just, you know, I hope that you, you see the good things that are happening with all the services that are being provided when it comes to funding for the following year, upcoming year.
So you don't give us numbers?
Yes, sir, so.
Your alpha bids now, or?
Yeah, so right now, and I'm sure y'all aware of this, it's very difficult to get contractors to show up to provide bids. Right now, I have two fence estimates, but the paving piece has been a struggle to get someone to come. You know, they're, they're looking for projects that are 20 acres.
Right.
And for to have something that may be an acre, but I will, there's someone scheduled next week to come and give us, give us a quote. The way we operate, we have to have three quotes. We will have to end up going out for bid for that and doing a basically association or RFP for that, so.
So we ought to talk at our, at our city, City lot of West Broad Street?
That's right.
Okay.
And it's, the location's pretty good, because, you know, the route is right there. We're basically 100 yards from the ground.
What's your name for us, is this a lease agreement?
Special with the surveillance.
What I would love to seek is a lease agreement, and then look at the potential of the level of support. So we would be able to pour 80%, you know, let's just give a $100,000 number. We can get $80,000 on the federal level to be able to, to make that project happen, but I still need to come up with the 20,000, the other 20,000. And that number may be right on what we're looking at as far as the project itself, I would imagine.
Is there a required time limit for the lease that you're looking for to match?
Um, it, it's based on the useful life, and the useful life of the fence will probably be more than the surface, so I think the last one we did was a 15-year with the city of Florence.
Have you got a proposed draft lease at some point you would like us to consider?
Yes, it's very similar to the one we have. It's pretty straightforward. I'd be happy to send that one back over and, and as an option. Really, you could almost take it, and because of, you know, the, the way it was worked up is almost the exact same thing we're trying to do here in Darlington. So you could go in and, you know, change it and have attorney to look, take a look at it, but.
I think it'd be good to send it to Mr. Payne, so our city attorney can take a look at it.
Definitely.
Mr. Mayor, can I, Mr. Suggers here, since this is maintenance field, I just wanted to offer him the opportunity to say anything if he'd like to, since this, where your facility is.
Thank you. Dale Rock?
Done.
Done, I'm sorry. We've spoken several times, and I'll be in touch with him this week, too. We set aside an area, and I think everything will be okay. Looks, looks good so far. They hadn't had a lot of problems, that one instance, I think is the only one, and we just need a little more security around the gates, that's just really what we need. We've added a lot of lighting, but more would be needed, and the cameras would be much appreciated, and all of that. So him and I will be talking a lot during this week. And I just sent you a contract, please.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Ms. Rock, by Ms. Fairley, and I will, we'll get together with Mrs. Kirk. We'll bring something back in the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So what are we doing?
Then get the details together, then bring it back next month.
Okay. Thank you. All right, new business, Orange Street Playground Equipment?
Probably skip off.
All of a sudden, you take a B. Take a B. Okay.
Discussion. We all see.
Okay, um, new business, discussion about start time, uh, the city council meeting?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, uh, several council members have approached me about, um, and this is just for discussion, there's nothing to take action on the note, um, to determine if councilmen like to start their meetings earlier, propose six o'clock instead of six thirty.
Question is, we was at seven o'clock, what, last year, year before last? And we moved it to six thirty? So now why are we moving to seven, six?
I thought we were just...
I'm asking, I'm asking a question.
No, I, I didn't, I don't remember being at seven.
We was at seven for years and years and years.
No, it was six.
We were at seven for years. The millions came on, and millions wanted to go to six thirty.
Oh, okay.
We went to six thirty.
All right.
So now why are we going to six? For what purpose?
Okay.
So then get out of here before nine thirty, and tell? Get out of here before nine, nine thirty.
Bring it up, but I'd like to start at six, just so I can get out of here earlier in the evening, with just as the same amount of time to discuss something. And if we run over...
Seven is when we're gonna have a meeting.
So late at night when we get home. I think the general reason for doing it at six instead of six thirty. Mr. Mayor, I, I looked at other municipalities around the area. Uh, the city of Florence does theirs at one o'clock in the afternoon, and, uh, the city of Marston does, starts theirs at five thirty.
It wouldn't have to do with dollars. It wouldn't have to do with dollars.
It's just, I'm just giving you the sample of other areas.
So it's a question, I just wanna know why we go, why y'all wanna go to six?
See, it's a question. We can six thirty, so why?
Are you fine with six? Are you fine with six?
I'm fine, really. I get all day and all night.
I'd like to motion to change our meetings at six PM to help some of us who would like to get home in a decent hour. Oh, we don't need to vote, I guess.
Uh, all I need is some direction, and I, you'll need an ordinance to change it. And I, with, with majority of councils approval, I, I will do that in the next meeting.
So later, are you, are you fine with six PM?
Oh, sure.
I'm fine.
I'm definitely okay with it.
Melon said he was, are you fine with it?
I don't care, I just wanna know the purpose of it. That was the question. You got confused or something?
No.
Question was, why'd you do that? That was my question.
All right, thank you. All right. Can we take some D?
What is wrong with it? I don't compete, no.
All right, C.
It wasn't that.
C, now we're going to D. It's true, and D's right up. Yes, sir, listen, I got too many markers around the D. All right, new bills, D. Discussion of, uh, two or seven, Siskron Street, okay? Mr. Payne?
Mr. Mayor, we had an appraisal done, this is the old Quo Boys Restaurant. Uh, we had an appraisal of the property done. It was, the opinion value was forty-five thousand dollars. Um, the administration's just asking for guidance on what you may wanna do with this property. Do you want to repair it and use it? Do you want to lease it? Do you want to sell it? I'm just looking for some direction. The appraisal, um, you put it just probably rounded up to the half-ounce driveway? Yes, sir. There's not any of the parking, uh, beside over the right.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm comfortable with it, as long as it stays as is. Um, we can have parking over there, which we're trying to do anyways. But as long as it's just a building, I'm fine, either way. Obviously, I'd like to lease it out, but somebody wants to, who wants to sell it, it's a great thing.
There, we have had several interested parties come forward and say they would be interested in potentially buying it.
Oh, and, and what reason that we wouldn't consider that?
That's what I'm asking.
That's what we're asking. Now, there...
I mean, I thought that was always the case.
We're talking about leasing it or, leasing it or selling it.
If, if you lease it, you don't get the tax revenue, because it's still owned by the city. You get the business license and the water and sewer. If you sell it, you'll get the sale of the property. You don't have to intentionally do the repairs unless that's included. There is a roof problem, and there's some ceiling issues going on with this building. Uh, but if you sell it to an individual or a business, uh, it goes back on the tax rolls. Then you get the property tax, and you get the water and sewer as well. And if it's a restaurant, you get the hospitality tax as well. So, question is, or is everyone okay with him, um, putting it out for sale?
Yes. Oh, I don't know about everybody else, I'm saying yes. Sounds like I'm no greater than me with all that.
Mr. Payne, um, in just looking at the tax map... Yes, sir.